Oh, hey Brian.
Hi Alan.
Hey Casey, get over here.
I can't understand how you got so large.
Don't do it Jack, go get six.
Okay, hello everybody, good evening, I'm calling to order the meeting of the Cohasset Board of Selectmen, it's Wednesday, November seventh, it's seven seventeen, we're in the Selectmen's office at Town Hall, first order of business is roll call, Kevin?
I'm McCarthy here.
Paul from here.
Diane Kennedy here.
Jack and Ily here.
Steve Donner.
And we will stand and if you'd like to join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is there anybody in the audience here for public comment, so to speak on matters not on the agenda? Okay, so the first order of business tonight is a continued liquor license hearing for Sajon Enterprises LLC. This is in relation, we'll do some descriptive information later. This is an ABCC remand of the non-renewal of a license, so we are here tonight to discuss a renewal application from Sajon Enterprises. I'm gonna read the hearing notice and then I will ask Attorney Lampke who's joining us to kind of walk us through some of the procedural items. This is addressed to Deborah Sajon, manager of Sajon Enterprises LLC doing business as Cohasset Wine and Spirits. Having received a remand from the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission regarding the non-renewal of a two thousand and sixteen license and being aware of other legal decisions, the Board of Selectmen acting in its capacity as the local licensing authority for the town of Cohasset will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October ninth, two thousand and eighteen at seven twenty PM, this is a continuance, on whether your two thousand sixteen off premises license renewal application should be approved or rejected and denied, and whether any license that may exist to be modified, suspended, canceled, revoked, or declared forfeited under the provisions of Mass General Law as a result of incomplete and inaccurate statements in the renewal application, failure to conduct the business, failure to exercise the license, failure to have a suitable location to conduct the business, and non-compliance with the applicable alcohol licensing laws of the Commonwealth and the town of Cohasset. The hearing is scheduled for Tuesday, October ninth at seven twenty in the Board of Selectmen Meeting Room, Town Hall, forty-one Highland Ave, Cohasset, Mass. Again, this is a continuance. You are being notified to appear at the hearing in order to give testimony in regard to this matter. You may be represented by counsel if you so desire. The cost arrangements of same being your responsibility. So I declare the continuance of the hearing open and I'd like to turn it over to Attorney Lampke to kind of walk us through the procedural steps.
Thank you, good evening. This is, as you indicated, a continuation of the hearing that was originally called for, for October ninth to address the issues on the renewal of the liquor license for the package store for two thousand and sixteen per a remand from the ABCC. And that's what's before us this evening. I believe Mr. and Mrs. Sajon are here and it suggests that they come up and take a seat. Before you sit down, let me just swear you in. This is a public hearing on the license. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony you vote to give in the matter now in hearing shall be the truth and the whole truth?
Yes.
And I take it Deborah Sajon, the manager of record?
Uh huh.
Mr. Sajon. Just as a preliminary matter to get this out of the way, when you had applied before for the renewal of the license, you gave the town a check and the one thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars of the town, you know, the check is not effective for the town because you, the license hasn't been renewed or issued. So the town wants to give you back this license, this check. We'll hold on to that before the hearing is concluded, we'll give you that back. Unless the board approves the renewal, then the check will probably, will keep the check.
Will go towards the renewal, the next renewal.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. So the issue, as you know, is whether or not the license for two thousand, that was for calendar year two thousand and sixteen should be renewed. I have a series of papers that I'm going to be introducing. Here's a packet for you folks. And these pertain to the town's issues on renewing or not renewing the license. Mr. Senior has graciously volunteered to be the clerk. I believe the board has most if not all of these documents before. So the first document would be the notice of tonight's hearing. That notice is dated September twenty seventh, calling for a hearing on October ninth. But on October ninth, at the time of the hearing, Mr. Sajon requested that it be postponed until this evening and the board agreed to do that. That's the notice. The second document.
Excuse me for one second, I'm sorry, I don't want to ruin the rhythm, but are we?
I already did with the business about the check.
Are these all, these are being labeled as exhibit numbers? Okay, all right.
Yes, yeah. And you can take off that paper clip and you can go through and follow what they are. So the second exhibit will be the renewal application for calendar year two thousand and fifteen that Mrs. Sajon, as the manager, signed and indicated that the lease had been terminated for the location at twenty-seven dash twenty-nine South Main Street. That, the renewal affidavit, application was approved by the Board of Selectmen and a license was issued, that would be the next exhibit. It's the license that was issued for calendar year two thousand and fifteen.
And that was for the twenty-seven to twenty-nine Main Street?
Well, yes.
Thank you.
Now, at some point in time, the lease was terminated at twenty-seven dash twenty-nine South Main Street and that's when the issue started to develop regarding the license. An application was submitted to transfer the location of the license by Mr. and Mrs. Sajon and the board scheduled a hearing on that at the request of the Sajons and their attorneys at various points in time. The hearing was continued several times. So I have a series of excerpts from the Board of Selectmen's minutes where that was done. The first minute, set of minutes is genuine, and this is all one packet just to make it easier for record keeping. On January twentieth, the board agreed to continue the hearing to February third. This is all two thousand and fifteen because there were issues regarding whether there was a suitable location from which to operate the license. February third, there was another continuance of the license hearing on the, on the transfer. They were present, Mr. and Mrs. Sajon were present and they submitted a request asking the board to continue the hearing so that they can reexamine property sites, et cetera. April fourteenth was the next date and at that hearing continuation, there was another hearing, continuation request. There was a request from the applicant's attorney requesting an extension or continuance for three months as they are in the process of developing plans. Meanwhile, all this time, the license was no longer being used because they no longer had, had a premises. Next, on July twenty-third was the next date that the hearing was to be addressed and their then attorneys filed an app, filed a letter requesting a further extension of another three months so that they can continue to work on the plans. That apparently was approved because the hearing was that evening. August twenty-fifth was the next time that this matter was before the board. The board then received another request from their attorneys to further extend the application for the transfer, this time for ninety days to explore additional locations. The board approved the extension at that time of, of the hearing. Then on September twenty-second was the next time that the board addressed this. Mr. and Mrs. Sajon were here. They represented to the board that they were in the process of purchasing property, but they had not yet approved it. The board continued the hearing until October twenty-seventh. Apparently, it was then continued further until November twenty-fourth. There was a hearing on November twenty-fourth and that was the date of the change of the location hearing. And the reason I include that in this is because, as I understand, part of the reasons that the board did not approve the renewal of the license was that there was no adequate location yet to operate it from in spite of all these times that it was before the board and the board continued the matter. Then on December eighth, the board addressed the renewal paperwork and relates to this license, upon motion made, the board disapproved the renewal of the license and then the board signed the, the next form. And I will introduce this as the next set of exhibits. It could be one exhibit, exhibit four. That's the series of minutes.
What, basically that, explain the timeline that you just delivered.
And what was happening with this license and my point in presenting that as part of the record is to show that the board, you know, time after time was trying to deal with this location, but they did not have a suitable location, did not have evidence of that. So then the board, in November of two thousand and fifteen, disapproved the renewal application and that was then sent to the ABCC. As you may recall, on the, on the renewal forms, there's a place for the board to indicate whether they approve or disapprove of it.
And just, just to confirm, then I heard you write, so that renewal was not approved by the Board of Selectmen on December, in December two thousand and fifteen?
Yes, December eighth was the date that the board voted not to approve the renewal application
Okay.
because of lack of adequate location to exercise the license. It was on, it was sometime either that night or thereafter that the board signed the rejection of the renewal application.
Okay.
Then the matter on the denial of the transfer went to the ABCC.
Okay.
There was no appeal filed for one reason or another regarding the denial of the renewal.
Okay.
But the, at the renew, at the hearing on the transfer of the location, the ABCC took the position that because the board did not approve the renewal, there was no license to be transferred. So the board, so the ABCC basically said that they were going to deny the appeal or take no action on the appeal for the transfer of the location because there was no license in existence at that point in time. So that's the, the next document, the ABCC decision.
Any questions on the board? Am I good right now for Jim? Okay.
There are a whole slew of other documents and, and history here, but I'm just trying to give you the highlights.
Focus on, yeah, right, on where we're.
The, the next matter of interest on this, the Sajons appealed the ABCC decision to Superior Court. The matter went through a judicial review process on, I believe it was motions for judgment on the pleadings, which is a typical way that appeals from administrative agencies are handled in the court. The administrative record is submitted and then the parties present legal argument in briefs and oral argument on it. As a result of the ABCC case, and I should point out that the town was not a party of the appeal to Superior Court, but that was between Sajon Enterprises and the ABCC. The court reviewed the record, held a hearing on it and the court basically remanded the matter back to the ABCC because the court felt that the ABCC should have addressed the renewal of the license as part of their consideration of the transfer. If there was a license that was in existence, then the ABCC should have addressed the transfer. The court felt that there should have been some other procedures locally for the renewal and because of that, the court remanded it to the ABCC with the suggestion that the ABCC remanded it back to the board here for further hearing on the renewal. The ABCC, so that, so that, here's the court decision.
Question. So what was before the Superior Court, a motion for the judgment on the pleadings?
It was an appeal of the ABCC's action in not acting on the appeal from the transfer.
Okay, so that was up there and then someone made a motion for judgment on the pleadings, right?
Right.
Who made the motion? What party?
Well, typically, what happens is an appeal is filed in Superior Court of an agency decision. The agency's response is filing the, as an answer, is filing the administrative record. There may be some procedural motions, et cetera. But then it's incumbent on the plaintiff, as the parties filed it in court, to file a motion for judgment on the pleadings. Quite often, they're basically done simultaneously.
Right, so that was, in this case, Sajon.
Sajon.
Made that motion, yeah.
Yeah, Sajon and, Sajon was the moving party, but not unusual for the agency to also simultaneously file. The agency would basically be filing a response to the plaintiff's motion for judgment on the pleadings saying that the plaintiffs should not get judgment in their favor, but the court should, in ruling on a motion for judgment on the pleadings, uphold the decision of the agency.
So they made a cross motion?
Typically, typically that, that is that the court's decision, in consideration of the parties' memorandum of law and oral arguments, for the reasons below, Sajon's motion for judgment on the pleadings is allowed. The ABCC's cross motion is denied, so the ABCC did file a, a motion for judgment on the pleadings and the matter was remanded for further, to the ABCC for further proceedings in accordance with this decision.
I want to try to keep us as focused on the ABCC's remanding a decision on the renewal of the license. Just, just so we don't get all confused.
So the Superior Court decision would be exhibit seven. The next document of note is the order from the, a procedural order from the ABCC and that would be number eight, where they are remanding this back to the board and the board, the ABCC is expecting the, the board to address the renewal issues. And the ABCC says it will take no action on any package store licenses from Cohasset, including one that's pending before them, until, until there is some final action. This is a very convoluted, unusual history and posture of this case. I, I have frankly never seen a situation like this where, where this has all transpired. So it is highly unusual. So the ABCC expects the board here to address the renewal. Then that will go back to the ABCC. The ABCC will take further action on the appeal for the transfer of the location or depending on what the outcome is here, they, they may take no action on it. It may very well go back to court as well. But the next step to move the matter forward is for the board to act on the renewal application. I would also ask the board to take administrative notice of the board's file on this license. And.
What do you mean by that?
Well, all the documents in the file, the file is voluminous and I didn't want to overpaper this matter.
Right.
But the file is voluminous and that the board should take administrative notice of its prior proceedings and the documents in that file so that that can all be part of, to the extent necessary, the board's administrative record.
Record with whatever decision that we make, we'll go to the ABCC, okay.
And as point of clarification, we are considering a matter for renewal of a license of, for calendar year two thousand and sixteen.
Yes.
Thank you.
I would like to ask the Sajons to introduce themselves and hopefully in that, pronounce your name appropriately for me and if, so if you would each give us your name and your address. Mrs. Sajon is the manager of record, will be directing most of your questions through me and back to you and then I'm sure the board will have questions and then obviously you'll have an opportunity to ask questions as well. So if you would introduce yourselves.
Deborah Sajon, forty-seven, Old Colony, Marneville.
Great, thanks, all right.
Yogan Sajon, forty-seven, Old Colony, apartment number one thirty-three, Marneville.
Okay. Do either of you have a statement to make?
Are there any questions or you want to discuss these documents in some fashion?
No, please don't.
Okay. Okay. So then I, I guess I'd like the board to ask questions once again. We're talking about a, a renewal of a, of an application for all, all alcohol license.
Package store.
Package store license for, this was something that we, we denied, but we didn't have the hearing. ABCC has asked us to have the hearing, this is the hearing now, to decide whether we would renew this application for, for calendar year two thousand and sixteen, which I know sounds a little crazy, but. So I turn it over to my colleagues if they have any questions of the Sajons.
I actually, a question for counsel, if you don't mind. As of the, assuming that we're entertaining this for calendar year two thousand and sixteen, all, all relevant facts are as of that date?
As I believe the posture should be, all relevant factors as of that date. The board can entertain any factors, any information that Sajons want to introduce, but you're looking at what would be your decision at a hearing since two thousand?
December eighth, two thousand and fifteen, for two thousand and sixteen renewal.
License.
Thank you. So as of December eighth, two thousand and sixteen, did you possess a permitted location by way of the Cohasset Planning Board?
Yes.
Do we know that, is that, is that an accurate statement?
The planning board's, the planning board's approval of the site plan, I believe, was in February.
Two thousand and sixteen.
February of sixteen.
So that would have been two months after, two and a half months after this particular date.
I think I have to check the record somewhere.
Give me one second, I can find the. Planning board decision was made on, was sent to the town clerk on February twenty-fourth, two thousand and sixteen and it indicated that the hearing was closed on February third, two thousand and sixteen. Deliberations were held on February third, two thousand and sixteen and upon a motion made, it was approved on February third, two thousand and sixteen.
Okay, so December eighth is the day we're considering it and about two months later, there was a permitted approval. But at the time of incineration, there was no permitted location. Is that, am I understanding the facts correctly?
Do you need a copy or?
That wasn't all under process only, it was all going down under process. It was with all the board, planning boards and there was, we were putting the things to them but are they need, so that's what was happening, what they put.
Right. Perhaps we should introduce this as an exhibit?
I think so, yes, yep, especially since we just discussed.
Nonetheless, I want to go back to the, the only facts that would have been in front of the board at that time is whether or not there were permitted location for retail operation. And it appears that as of December eighth, two thousand and fifteen, there was, there was not a permitted location for retail operation. At the Chief, Chief Justice Cushing highway address.
Yes, because the, the board didn't vote on the site plan review until February third.
All right, and just one, one other point of clarification. At that point, December eighth, two thousand and fifteen, the license had been non-operational for about, what, a year and a half?
Around thirteen, fourteen months at least.
Yeah, I, I think they, I, do you recall when you lost, when you lost your lease at twenty-seven, twenty-nine Main Street?
Yes, we told them over till we lost that.
Wha, I'm sorry, what month?
When was it?
When was it?
It was in, I think, September or maybe before September, I don't know exactly.
Two thousand and fourteen.
Two thousand and fourteen, okay. And then we deliberated or, you know, we had a discussion in December of two thousand and fifteen on the renewal. We had just denied the change of location.
Well, no, in fourteen, fourteen we renewed.
Fourteen, we renewed it.
Correct, but then the following, a year and a half, yeah, that's.
And the fall, and.
Fifteen months.
And at the time you renewed it, in, it was filed, the renewal application was filed in November of two thousand and fourteen, the lease had already been lost, terminated by a couple of months.
Right.
And that was correctly stated on, on the form.
Right.
On the form that was.
For renewal.
For renewal. On the form for two thousand and sixteen calendar year, it represented that the business was open and operating at the South Main Street address. So that was inaccurate on, on that form.
Okay. Any other questions? Kevin?
So the applicant before us is Deborah Sajon, is that right?
Uh huh.
She's the manager of record of.
So that's the official applicant before us.
Sajon, Sajon, how do you pronounce him, Sajon? Sajon Enterprises is the applicant, she's the manager of record.
So Deborah, you saw all the documents and so forth that were being introduced by our counsel. Do you have any documents or anything you want to submit tonight for our consideration as we decide this?
No, they was asked us to pay the property taxes that we have paid, a long toll for a lot.
If I could explain what that is, thank you. At the last hearing, the matter was continued at the Sajon's request of tonight and it turned out that they owed the town just around three thousand, four thousand dollars in unpaid taxes. So the supplemental notice that went out after October nine said that tonight's hearing was going to also address the fact that they didn't, they hadn't paid all their money owed to the town and that is a separate independent basis for the board to reject an application after giving notice and the hearing. But in the meantime, they did pay that. So this hearing doesn't involve that and this is just proof that, that they're supplying.
Your Mac is an exhibit.
Sure.
Thank you.
So does the applicant, do you have any other, any other documents you want to show us, sir? And do you have anything else that you want to say to us in support of your application for renewal tonight? And for us to consider as we make our decision?
Only the thing to say, we are losing money till we have bought, we bought property and all everything. I spent tons of money, that's what I can say. Only the thing to say, we are losing money till we have bought that we bought property and all everything, I spent tons of money, that's what I can say, nothing else.
You spent some money on what, I'm sorry?
Property.
I spent tons of money with architect, engineers, and the crews and all, and I bought that property, so that's it.
Okay, and is that all?
Yeah.
Uh, okay, I'm done.
Paul, any questions?
Uh, I I guess at that time, it was a year and three months where the license was dormant and not using, so that is a concern uh on my part. Um, in addition, at the time, the building was not uh properly permitted and that was again one of the reasons why we, uh at least at the time, felt it was not an appropriate location for the business. So those are the two points I'd like to.
Jack, anything?
No, I'm good.
Steve?
I'd ask some questions earlier for points of clarification, because it 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 this is um a task that uh was handed to us by a a body that frankly has increased to look at calendars from time to time. The ABCC and and the courts. Yeah, I it just focuses in again, we're we're looking at the potential uh, I'm sorry, the renewal application for calendar year two thousand sixteen, nothing further. Uh, this is it has nothing to do with a an application for license transfer.
Correct.
At that point in time, where I am stopped is December eighth, two thousand and fifteen, there was no place in which to operate this business. And there wouldn't have been for another two months, and at that point, we would've considered the potential for transfer, but nothing else, and.
No, place was there, such as people.
Let me let's allow me to finish, please. Um. At that point in time, December eighth, and I this I address just to the colleagues, to my colleagues, um the it the license had been non-operational for more than fifteen months. Um, and the the cause of that was not uh uh Sejan Enterprises doing, they they lost the lease not by the by way of their choice. Um, having said that, the board exhibited uh enormous forbearance to try and find a home for that, a suitable home for that property. And showed that forbearance by uh posting, by my count, at least eight continuations.
Yep.
Um, now, back in time, at December eighth, two thousand and fifteen, the question is whether or not you renewed that license. Um, and I I'm, other than to make the ABCC's life easier in this mess that they've created for themselves, I have a hard time finding how we would have done that at that time.
How we would've renewed the license?
Renewed the license at that time without a location, and that would've been a level of forbearance that frankly would've discluded passing that license to any other operator who might have wanted to apply to it.
Right.
Or not passing, but making it available to other applicants uh who might have wanted to apply for it. Um, and had a potentially suitable suitable location. And alternatively, you know, to take the um the advocate side of the argument, the question then would arise, could the board have shown even just a little bit more forbearance? Having done so, we could have moved on to a um a hearing, a more fulsome hearing on the transfer application, which on its on its own brings in a set of considerations and facts that are not for consideration at this at this one, at this particular hearing. So, that's where I am on it, um I um I frankly would have a hard time making that leap at that time and it's harder still now.
Agreed, and and I think that I think that the procedural um
That that so.
error that the ABCC is asking us to correct is just that we didn't have a full hearing. We didn't give the Sejans an opportunity on the renewal matter, we had prev- we had just a couple of weeks prior to that denied the transfer, so.
No, I understand we denied the transfer for, but the the basis for the denial of that transfer are the very same reasons that I am having difficulty with the renewal.
Correct.
We had, we there was no legitimate, uh not legitimate, permitted location for the business. And, I you know, and that could've been, as time would show in the calendar, that would've been remediated two two and a half months later, two months later.
Right.
Um, but we didn't have two months to wait to renew.
Correct.
And we had no indication, as a matter of fact, I do recall, our minutes may show as much, we had no indication from uh the planning board at that moment as to whether or not they felt that they had a um a permissible application.
Correct, yep. Okay. Jim, do you have any further comments?
Um, no, um.
Unfortunately, procedurally, we need to.
Can you just, one second here.
I'm glad you used the word forbearance, because I was like ticking off marks, I I there, you know, I think there were there were at least eight times we continued the hearing to, you know, afford the Sejans an opportunity to find a location and at at that moment in time in two thousand and fifteen, there was there was nothing on the horizon per from our perspective to make um a decision on.
I I don't have anything further to say, it's a decision for the board to make as to whether or not they wanna approve the the renewal or uh not approve the renewal for the reasons that the board has articulated. Uh, I at the time of the renewal review in in December two thousand and fifteen, uh the applicant did not have a sufficient location or sufficient rights to operate the license at at any location, and as has been pointed out, the matter has been was extended numerous times to give them that opportunity. It's it's unfortunate, but it, you know, the board apparently felt that enough was enough at that point, because had you renewed the license and then in the new year decided, well, we're now no further along, we would then ha- have to have held a hearing to cancel the license due to non-use.
Right.
So, one of the reasons that the board would've had in in December is that the license was not being exercised.
Right, and hadn't.
Uh, I I don't know if Mr. and Mrs. Sejan wanna certainly wanna give them any opportunity that they want to say anything further as to
Yeah, if you if you.
why the license should be remu- should be renewed, or should've been renewed under those circumstances.
Yeah, I'm happy to, if you have any other comments to make, otherwise, I'm gonna ask the board to discuss next steps, okay? Um, anybody have a comment amongst ourselves to talk about, or would somebody like to make a motion?
Yeah, I think it comes down to either renew it or not, and at the time, what before us was the license that was dormant for over a year. Location that was not properly permitted, so I I do have like to make a motion for um deny the renewal application of Sejan Enterprises' license for failure for uh to operate a licensed business and a proper location for the business to operate the license.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other comments on the board?
Uh, I just have a question on the motion that I've directed to uh the uh counsel. Uh, can we bring into the uh to to the motion, any commentary with respect to suitability of the location?
No, it's e- either there was a location or or no location.
Or is that later date? Oh, okay, thank you, well, I think then the motion is, it sounds like it's valid the way it is, then.
Okay. We have um motion and a second, okay, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, passes unanimously, thank you for being here.
Before you before you go, here's that check, you you just sign it and see if you'll be, maybe I do, but here's one.
Okay, we are gonna move along. Um, yeah, I'd like to um some, does somebody um make a motion to close the hearing?
Thank you.
So, second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Hearing's closed, gonna move on to the agenda, the next agenda item is the town special town meeting warrant. Chris, I'm gonna turn it over to you, if you need a minute to get your the right papers in front of you.
Yeah, let me just uh.
That's fine. Alright, take, we'll take.
Alright, I think we're good.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim, thank you.
So, um, the warrant is ready to go, so tonight, what you have in front of you is is the warrant, and there's one tweak which I'll mention as we get a little closer. So, um, tonight, you need to vote to formally place each one of these articles on the line, which I think you've done, actually, but just, or actually, just to re-adopt a warrant as a group when you're done.
Okay.
And then make any recommendations you wanna make to the spring, uh and I'll walk through it, at this point, everyone's voted on everything except for one item, which we'll get to later.
Let me just ask kind of like a procedural question, um, can we just vote the whole warrant at the end and vote recommendations on each article as we go through?
Sure. You can, yes. Yes, yes, that's probably the best way.
Yeah.
So, the I remember, uh, Article one is a municipal operating, uh nineteen operating, but there's only one, it's a line item transfer uh of some funds, forty-seven thousand and eleven dollars uh from the Department of Permitment and Inspections to Public Works, and that's just because that's where headcount happens to be. Uh, there's one headcount down in permit inspections and there's one in public works that's off, so we're just moving on, so it's not a new headcount, it's just a different place. Yeah.
James.
Um, and Don I felt uh it was more appropriate to get this done at this point, rather than wait till the spring, uh so we're cut the body, the people aren't placed, let's just get it done.
Is is just just projecting for FY twenty, is this part where this'll stay?
Yes, it'll stay there, yeah.
Do you anticipate, okay, alright. Anybody have any questions?
No.
Our advisory voted six uh to recommend approval by a vote of six to none.
Is there a motion to recommend approval of Article one?
So, second.
All those in favor, aye? No, we're gonna we're gonna place the articles on the warrant as an entity, we have to do recommendations one by one, sorry.
Alright.
Uh, the next one, uh, we we had discussed at the last meeting, it says unfortunate one, uncoordinated bill, um, uh, the um the advisory committee has reviewed it and recommended approval by a vote of six to none.
We discussed this last time, is there a rec- is there a motion?
Shall we uh approve Article two to town meeting?
I'd actually vote to deny it.
Well, you don't have to say, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, aye, is there a nay?
Aye.
Okay, five to nothing, I know, I understand, we we're with you.
No.
So, Article three uh is is uh putting placing money into stabilization funds. Um, of course, you've been asked uh just to make sure they're all buttoned up, and I gave you a memo from our finance director, Don Pyatt, as to how he's.
I didn't see that, is that at our table, I don't know.
Yeah, and if I I put it in front of everybody's desk.
Did I like grab it?
Yes, yeah. Madam Sarah, may I?
I know, I just.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, maybe none of you have it, because it's in front of me, no, you, oh, I did, I give, there it is, here.
No, no, sorry. I just don't know what.
Yeah, that's a lot of time.
Thank you.
I was gonna ask you.
Thank you.
So, um, the um, the sh- this this gives the this'll be, these are the balances for each of the funds after the transfers are made. Uh, the general stabilization would it would be up to three point eight one seven million, capital would go to one point three two nine million. Facilities is not being moved, that's just the money that's left over now at the moment, and special education will be up to three hundred and fourteen thousand and seven hundred and eleven dollars. Um, all of these are uh within our um followed our policy guidelines. Um, the last one, by the way, is the OPAH, uh and that's become our 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 tradition at this point, is put at least four hundred, uh, you know, three fifty, we're actually gonna be putting cumulative amount of five hundred into the foundation here as a result of this transfer. That'll bring that balance up to a little bit, three point two million dollars.
Right.
And uh, if you look on the back, there's a little chart that shows where we are in relation to our policies, you can see that um we jigged back up, with with these transfers, put us right back on the line, yeah, so um we if you know, two, couple of years ago, we had that nice free cash, we put a bunch of it into reserve funds, it got us to our goal, we've stayed there, that little tweak uh from last year was when we spent the money for the fire engine.
Right.
So it didn't take us far out of, you know, we just legal this off the line, this actually puts us back on the line. Uh, and the spending we're projecting at ten minutes actually not gonna materially affect it, because only a couple hundred thousand dollars of actual capital reserve money, the rest of it is for cash, which doesn't count for this. Um, so, um, the recommendation is to um, for the seventy-five thousand for stabilization, the five hundred thousand for capital, twenty-five thousand for special ed, four hundred thousand for OPAH. Uh, advisory reviewed it and recommended approval by a vote of six to none.
Okay, and I I I mentioned to Chris earlier, somebody had asked me about the the two percent for the sped, um, so our our directives and the policy when we established this special education stabilization was to cap it at two percent of the annual school spending.
And and it's within that number.
And it's still, there's still some room.
So Desi, originally, this is actually something Don and I went back and forth on, uh, because there was conflicting information. Uh, there's two kinds of net school spending, and it's actually, I have a chart that I can show you, but it it basically, there's minimum net school spending, which is with the state mandates and what you actually spend. Uh, if we were using the minimum net school spending, which is well below what we actually spend, uh, the number would be low, but you, and that's what they originally pegged them on, but they have now changed their guidance to say, no, it's actual net school spending, uh, not the minimum amount. So that actually allows the funding up to four hundred, and where's Don's number here?
Four sixty-five.
Yeah, um, and this only brings it up to three fourteen, so, um, we're well within the the company's.
And the uh schools vote on that, they didn't issue?
You know, I don't, I, you know, I I I key, every time I run into the school committee, I forget to ask them, uh, um, they can, I mean, we, I I put this on here because it does affect them, and I know they're supportive of it. Uh, and this actually affected, it's not directly from the free cash that this the turnback from the schools, but it it's a piece of the turn, this is the second year where the schools have given money back, and we put it in a piece of that back on the special education stabilization.
So my my instinct is is I would love for them to to weigh in, but I would just as soon recommend removing that line of the school committee recommendation, since we don't have it.
I I. No, I'm happy to take it out.
Unless we have it, or have it, right.
No, I don't have anything, I I don't know that they formally voted on it, so.
Okay, so I would just as soon get rid of that, and then, you know, if they wanna give a thumbs up at special town meeting.
If they want to, I can add it back in and let them, everyone.
But this has to go to print, like, right, so it's it's either in or out right now, with absent a number.
Tomorrow. I'll take.
What's, uh, what is the amount of the turnback?
It was like fifty-seven thousand dollars, something like that.
So it's about, this is.
About half.
Four, yeah, somewhere around half of the turnback.
Yeah, okay.
Um, does anybody wanna make a motion to recommend to town meeting Article three?
So.
Second.
All those in favor, aye, any nays?
Aye. Uh, Article four is a series of uh small, one-time cost items, uh, the first one is the pull pads, if anyone voted, you you checked in using the pull pad, and some people did.
Yeah, I didn't.
You didn't?
I did.
Some people did.
I did.
I don't, I'm sorry, it was used for early voting, not for not for the day of voting, so.
Early voting. I'm old fashioned, I gotta go that day.
Yeah. So if you early voted, you saw it, if you didn't already been, it went very well, it 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 made the, it it saved Carol's office hours of of processing time, and she's very excited about it, you know, she'll be able to use it for checking in at town meeting as well, it should speed the process up a lot. Um, she's looking for four of them, because you need one for every fifteen hundred voters pursuant to the the law, uh, the requir- and um, that's sixty-three hundred and sixty bucks. This is a road deicing pile project which you had described by um Jason Federico, um, which involves a uh a an elasis and magnesium chloride blend that will be sprayed onto salt and sand. Uh, the hazard mitigation plan update, which is something we're required to do to to be able to get money for remediation projects through Mema and FEMA, that's a twenty thousand dollar upgrade through um MAPC, which we're gonna use existing data as well, which should speed up the process from the MVP program we did uh earlier this year. And then there's a list of facilities projects, um, which uh, there's some things at the schools, um, it's this cleaning at the library in there, uh, deep clean, which hasn't been done in quite some time. Um, and some uh uh accelerating equipment, small equipment and supply to gas and to 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 get them ahead, buying a bulk kind of stuff, which they don't always do. Um, and that's fifty thousand, so, um, the um, the advisory committee reviewed this and recommended uh approval by a vote of six to none.
Any questions or a motion to recommend to town meeting Article four?
Make a motion and recommend to town meeting for Article four, allocation of funds for water costs.
There's a second?
Okay.
All those in favor?
Alright.
Aye.
Any nays? Alright.
You've already reviewed Article five, so that's done. So Article six is the slightly tweaked article, so it's it's now broken into two pieces in A and in B. Uh, the eighth piece has four items in it, uh, a hundred and twenty thousand for LED streetlight purchase and installation, thirty thousand for um emergency power supply at the tide gate at Jake Smith No. Thirty-three thousand, a hundred and twenty-five dollars for police protective equipment for active shooter stuff, and two hundred and forty thousand for repairs of the. thirty-three thousand, a hundred and twenty-five dollars for police protective equipment for active shooter stuff, and two hundred and forty thousand for repairs of the Ann River reservoir dam. First three coming out of capital reserve, and the last from water retained earnings, of which there's roughly seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Uh, a chunk of which is from money that was not spent last year on the same project. So this project cost didn't go up because, uh, they did a, a more full, they were able to get a deeper dive and, and get a better price, or a more comprehensive price, I should say. These four projects have been reviewed, the LED streetlights were, were all, were all in a, a good place. Uh, in fact, the, 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 the light that we're looking to acquire is actually at the corner of, right across from the community center on Main Street. So if anybody wants to see it.
On the way home.
Uh, you can check it, um, it has a nice, it has a nice, it's, it's, it has a nice light, it's a, it's a, it's a very mellow but very well illuminating light. So it fits the, the, the character of the town. Uh, one of the things that we hope, one of the things we hope to do is once these are in place, to assess additional locations for adding lights back, because the price is now so much lower for ma, for maintaining and running electricity, that, which I think will address some of the areas of darkness, is there are some areas of, of the roads that probably can use a couple of lights. And, but we'll deal with that after we start the process of this.
What's the anticipated payoff on this install?
Why are you asking?
Um, actually, I, I, I can ask Chris, but it's a, you know, capital, capital.
So, so, by the way, let me, there's two things I should add to this, and that's one of them. The first is that there's roughly fifty thousand dollars, uh, in, in a grant, and in, uh, energy utility incentives that we will get back on this project, so the net cost of the town will actually be only about seventy or less. Um, A, B, and we'll put that money back into, into the capital, into the capital reserve when that comes in. Second, the turn, the, the, the payback is roughly two and a half years. It basically, it should reduce our utility cost between twenty and thirty thousand, that's, that's the estimate that the alternative energy folks ran. So...
So that's, that's twenty, that's two and a half years on a subsidized cost?
Correct.
Right. And what's the timeframe over which the subsidy is supposed to come in?
Immediate, so once we, once we put this in, these are, we, we pay upfront, and then the, the comes, it's already been vetted through, there's a whole state program. We're kind of catching the, the tail end of the state program. Uh, as long as we go into procurement of lights in, by December, by, before the end of December, we'll, these will all kick in.
I hope you have it ready.
It's, it's all ready now.
Ready to go.
The lights are bid, all the estimates are done, all we need to, the only thing that's needed is town meeting approval for the funding, uh, and we're good to go.
So, so if this were, if we were bearing the cost in full as a six-year payoff?
Effectively, or less. Uh, and the, um, the other piece that we haven't estimated yet is the amount of maintenance savings we'll have, because these have a twenty-plus year life expectancy.
Right.
Uh, so, and they're all going in new, uh, so...
What kind of warranties are there?
Um, there is a, there is a warranty on it, uh, I don't know if Tom, they have what the numbers are, my, my LED expert is not here tonight, so... But she, no, she sent me an email, which I printed out, and I don't have it in front of me, but I...
The pay hold is based on the cost of trust, so...
Let, let me read it.
Yeah, but I know, that's part of it, but when you're, we're looking at it, yeah, I, I, believe me, I, I understand the value of, uh, of the longevity of LED. But the, there, there was some years ago, two or three years ago, there was a question, because you could install an LED, uh, piece and then have failure. So it's not necessarily that there's no maintenance, that there, the expectation that there's no maintenance.
There's just, there's a, a much reduced maintenance window.
If they break theirs.
This is actually a, um, it's, it's a, it's a newer company, um, and I, and I, I, I'm afraid I'm gonna maggle the name of it, unless Brian remembers.
Leotech.
Leotech, uh, which is a, which some members of the capital, or a particular member of the Capitol, which we actively work with our staff on, uh, and they're a, um, they're an up-and-coming entity. They're, they're moving aggressively, and they have a, a slightly more modern product, if you can say that, you know, a lot of the, which has the ability to, uh, to, to adapt to the future, I think. They have dimmer, these will have dimmer, uh, switches or dimmer, uh, devices built into them, so we can tweak them down if we need to. And they, um, they came with a, again, I believe it's...
It's ten year, she just texted me to send it.
There we go, she's...
Watching the house, they're missing.
The number of fee, okay, it's a ten-year warranty, but they expect a twenty-year life.
Twenty year for the light manufacturer.
But that's, that's on the, that's on the light permitting die, right?
Form of technology.
Okay, so if we have to call someone in to replace it, it's still, it's still...
We have, we'll still have the company that does that.
Okay. Are we, is that a contracted piece?
So we have a base fee that we pay that was kind of a retainer, to, to be available, and then they, we get charged for every time they come out. Uh, but this should hopefully reduce the number, once they do the actual installation, we should have less calls, hopefully.
Um, just on the, I noticed some language change on the tide gate. Um, so, just your being more generic in saying emergency power supply because of...
Well, we, we meant it more generic because it was a big conversation about whether to use a generator or battery.
Generator.
I think we're back to the generator, but we're just leaving it, call, we're just gonna call it emergency power supply. This is, in case of a powerful, what, so, um, there are a number of changes that we've talked about in front of the board, uh, at the tide gate, that the gate itself has been replaced. It's working better than it ever has, uh, there's been some tweaks to the, the motor. Um, the one piece, uh, that, and there's a, there's also an emergency flat valve now, so that even if they get us locked in a closed position, water can flow out, uh, providing the tides are right. What's, what was not available is if the gate was in an up position and power failed, and there was no one available to get down there to lower it. That actually happened during one of the big storms ahead of March.
Right.
Everything was great, trees are coming down, probably crews, crews are doing other stuff, and the gate, and the power failed, as, before the gate locked down, so the tide came in. That only takes, it only needs to happen once, and the tide gate doesn't function as far as the residents concerned, because their basements get water and, and water gets...
Couldn't you just change it to a failsafe, so if power fails, it just closes?
No, it, it, it can't be engineered that way, I'm afraid, it's, 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 um...
Like a micro power plant, if power fails, rods go in and shuts it down.
Well, but, that, that would be, the challenge though is if power is down for a period of time, which it has been, it needs to reopen and close, otherwise water backs up. Because the, 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 the emergency ch, flat valve helps, but it's not sufficient. So, yeah, so, um...
It needs to be running.
Right, so, so this is the last piece that will, I, I think, really make the upgrade, the residents are very excited, they're very pleased. Capital Budget, uh, very appropriately asked some very good questions, and a lot of analysis was done, and, and we're to where we are, so, um...
Is the capital reserve fund on these three? It's the same as the capital stabilization fund, which is...
Yes, yes, yes.
So, I suggest, I mean, why don't we use the same word for the public, so they don't, I don't think it's two different things. Pick either one you want.
Well, it is the capital stabilization.
Yeah, we could call it capital stabilization.
Yeah, I, I, I'm sorry, I revert to, I revert to old language sometimes when I'm typing stuff down, it's, uh... So, um, the police protective equipment, you heard Chiefs quickly discuss, that stood up the twelve officers with this extra, with this protective gear. And the reservoir, you've also heard, uh, Jason explain about. Uh, these have been reviewed by advisor committee and recommended for approval by a vote of six to nothing. The Water Commission, the Ann River piece alone is, that's the only, the only piece, they're recommending three to nothing. And Capital Budget recommended, uh, by, I think it's about a three to nothing on all of them, over a couple of different meetings. So they, they've recommended approval on all of these items as well, and they're, you, by the way, so, you have the chairman and vice chairman hanging out here, if you have any questions, I'll give you that.
Um, is there a motion to recommend Article Six?
So moved. No, no, it's Six A.
Six A?
Six A, yes.
Could you put the A in there?
It's, it's, it's up there, see, informational summary, yeah.
Oh, I see, okay, thanks, yep.
Okay, so moved.
Good second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so, let me get to part B. So, there's been a big conversation about, um, the town hall and, um, what the next steps are. Uh, one of the things, um, that came through was this, this study on the analysis of repair. There's a growing, there's a consensus among all the committees that historic structure needs to be repaired, regardless of what happens. Um, and there was, there's been a desire to look at steps that can be taken, um, so that things don't continue to decay. After some, at, at this point, it, it seems like we're heading towards recommending or requesting from town meeting, uh, money for professional, the way it's worded at the moment, but this is still subject to potential change, professional services for design and bidding for roof repairs for slash replacement at town hall. I think that covers the universe. Roof, the roofs can be done, or at least the roof at the historic structure is done, regardless of any other piece that is eventually done in the building. The envelope's a little more complicated, particularly with the windows and other things that may also get done, and paint and the restoration of the wood. And, uh, you know, you're gonna need a roof regardless, um...
Excuse me, so, so this is for professional services for the design and building for, is this just for the roof?
Just for the roof.
We're just only talking roof?
All it does, um...
So what we're thinking of proposing to the town is, uh, funding, design to do the roof, you know, is it both roofs, old and new?
Well, at the, at this point, it's, 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 that's an open conversation.
Close, you know, structure.
It's been primarily focused on the historic structure, because the, uh, you know, what happens with this building is still, uh, an open question. Uh, but regardless, there's a, there's, there's a consensus that that building needs to be maintained, uh, and made significant.
And there are leaks in the roof.
And there are leaks to the, yeah, this is, uh, but, so the other reality is that we don't have a fir, firm price, we, we've had a couple of different estimates and estimations. Uh, and we wouldn't, wouldn't really be able to do the project till the spring anyway, so, um, but we need to get the, we need to get the design done, the bid documents done, go out to bid, and then have it...
So, I, I, I see there's no figure here, so how much is this, and who's gonna decide when, because this is something that, we, you know, this is gonna come up on town meeting floor, right? So, don't we wanna figure out this?
Yeah, yeah, so let me, let me, let me give you the ballpark, so, so you're not worried, the reason that's also empty, because we're, it depends on the, the scope. We're talking about a, a cost that's probably not more than twenty thousand dollars, it should be less. And it's possible that we could go to the Community Preservation Committee to ask if they would, uh, open up money from that fund to pay for it. So that's why that's both made...
So better than the rubber sheet that's up there now.
Yeah, so it'd be better than the rubber sheet.
So, so to, to Kevin's point, and I, I, um, you know, I, I, I'm happy to go forward with something, but the question is, is it worth socializing a number?
Yes, I can, and I'm, I'm happy to put a number, and I'm gonna change, I mean, you know, as long as we don't go to two hundred thousand.
Like twenty thousand dollars? So that people... Right, and then we go to the, right, and then the motion is, you know, fourteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
Yeah, can I, um...
And if it's twenty-five, we take five out of the advisory fund, the emergency fund to pay for it?
As long as it's in the ballpark, I mean, it's, it's not...
We're not gonna do that, you know.
Oh, they actually reserve the issue. Guys, I mean, I, I, I appreciate that it's hard to put a number on it right now, but, uh, you know, from that perspective, I, frankly, we would, we've had arguments, raging arguments, about going forward to town meeting or special town meeting with incomplete articles.
With a, I agree.
And I'm, I'm happy to put the article on the warrant, but I don't think I wanna, I wanna vote for a recommendation until I understand what the number is.
No, 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 it was twenty.
That I would, that I would put twen, I would put twenty.
Right, but, but we're not gonna recommend this article, we're gonna have this as an agenda item at a very soon meeting, next week or...
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I...
Oh, wait, excuse me, but, this is gonna be printed.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause I see it could be printed in this way, recommendation at town meeting.
Correct.
Right.
So, but this is now gonna go out to all the, this is gonna go to the homes, and the people are gonna be talking about this. All I'm saying is, I mean, we've been through this pony, you know, but...
No, so put, I think twenty's a good number.
So, well, what I'm thinking also too is, I mean, it seems reasonable to me, but I just think we need to keep in mind the experience and the knowledge we've gained through the processes we went through three months ago. So this has not been discussed, it hasn't been socialized, as Diane said, this, there's nothing in the community where this has been discussed. So I'm concerned whether it's ten dollars or whatever it is, because there are vigorous debates around, if I may finish, there are vigorous debates in this town about what to do at all about town halls. So, you know, this could be five hundred and fifty dollars, but the issue may become, should we do the roof, or why? And this is the first night we have, this, time we have discussed this, so, even before we would have put a warrant, I, since we happen to have capital advisory here, I would like to hear from them, if it's okay with the chair, if they have any gist from the committee, before, because I think we need, as Steve said, I think we need to be careful we don't put our foot in the honest nest here, that's all.
So before we go there, you know, before we ask, you know, I mean, there, um, I, I, if, I want the selectmen to ask their questions first amongst ourselves.
No, no, no.
I, I think it's a very valid question, my, the only thing I would like to say is, if this gets on here, and I kinda think we should, I, I have reasons to believe that it's worth doing something or presenting something in December. You know, the warrant is really the agenda. So, the, but I would be very inclined to have this discussion fully vetted as an agenda item on our next Board of Selectment meeting, to say, this is what we're gonna talk about. And then if we decide we're not ready for prime time, we don't have a valid argument. You know, we, we, um, whatever, we withdraw it at, at town meeting, but...
So you're, you're put... You're putting a placeholder on now, because it has to go to the printer tomorrow. If, if after the discussion we decide it's not appropriate, we'll pull it at town meeting.
Correct. Thank you, now, did you have something?
Uh, I think it just matter, you know, amount to be decided, I don't know what the amount's gonna be.
But I think Kevin's right, let's talk about it.
I would rather have a hard number, but it's gonna have to go to the printer, so it's gonna have to go in some format. I think this is reasonable, but, um, you know, I think the big discussion is if it's gonna get done in the spring, it's not gonna get done in the fall, in the winter, or in the winter.
Kicking that can down the road.
Is it worthwhile even considering in the spring and just rebuild the whole thing in the spring? I think it's reasonable to put some potential monies in reserve, because, God forbid, the large plastic sheet rips and Paragon Falcon gets access to warp critters like it did before.
So, so what you're saying is...
I, I would put it on there.
Put it on there, and I think, I, I think that...
But you're gonna, you're gonna allow focus.
My recommendation on, on a number is to put a number in there so that it, it has some context to it, so it's not like, what the hell's that gonna cost? Like, you know, are we talking a hundred thousand dollars, are we talking four hundred dollars? You know, just giving some framework, which you think is a reasonable number. And again, we're not recommending it, we're, we're, this is just to put it as an agenda item, to get it in people's heads, and then we have a wholesome conversation.
Based on the conversation, when I know the numbers, and again, John or Brian could probably be wrong, misremembering this, it's about, about twenty, I think is a safe number. It should be less, but that's a safe number.
Yes, it, I, I, Jack's point of, uh, putting a number in as a placeholder is useful. Uh, the, the one caution I would have is that just because the number shows up, doesn't mean we should try to stretch to get there.
No, 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 we don't have to, I, I would prefer to make it as low as possible.
And, yeah, I, 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 I actually have no issues whatsoever going forward within this article showing up as a, uh, an amount and a source to be determined, because we will, we will hash that out publicly in advance and then go into town meeting with a, you know, with a recommendation. The, 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 the actual amount that you are between, the discussions that have taken place here, uh, seems to be somewhere in the neighborhood of, you know, fourteen to twenty thousand. That is not a break-the-bank number for the purposes of bidding out a roof repair. I'm afraid to see what the number will be for the roof repair.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Uh, but I do believe it's a, it, it's our best practice, and it should be our best practice before we ever go forward to a, uh, you know, a town meeting or a special town meeting, to be as complete as we can with the, with the, with the warrant numbers, right, as opposed to TDDs, and it's a, so that's my one reticence on this.
So, Kevin had asked whether, um, did, yeah, sure, Kevin, yeah?
Well, can I, can we finish this election? So, just so I know, 'cause, um, we, I want us all to be conscious of the fact that when we come forward with this, what I'm thinking of though is, is that there's gonna be members of the community that have been waiting to hear, well, you know, what, what we're gonna do about town hall. And then we come up with, well, here is what we're gonna do, we're gonna fix the roof. And I'm just thinking, in this community, as well as comments, as in a dying smiling, people may raise their hand and say, ooh, can't we have a bigger conception of what you're doing than just the roof, and, and what is it you've got in mind? Should we do anything until you folks fulfill your task of coming up with an overall solution to this? All I'm saying, I'm just cautioning, 'cause I'm, I'm gonna go along with this if you want, but I, I, I just think that, I'm just worried about the communication.
I'll speak to this for a second. You know, there's been...
Oh.
A significant number of citizens are concerned about the fact that we let the buildings go over time, and some people believe there's a conspiracy to let the buildings go, so that it, we're forced into doing repairs on both buildings.
Saying that just makes me crazy, don't you think?
Right, so, that's not true. Uh, there are leaks in the two buildings, we thought it was prudent just to move forward with some kind of roof repair, with the understanding that any kind of proposed roof repair would not be, uh, it would be something that was permanent and not be ripped apart in order to fulfill whatever bigger plans we have for both of the, you know, buildings.
Right, and it wouldn't impact whatever we decide to do, whether it's all repaired, knocked down, you know, rebuilt, we're not gonna knock that one off.
Right. Right, it was, we thought it was a good prudent next step, and I think, you know, I think the only reason we're talking about this now is because we have to go to print tomorrow. That's the only reason, and I think, I, I know the chairman wants to come back and have a full discussion around why we do roof repair now as opposed to get the whole project done and move forward later. So can we, can we do a trust me on this and, uh, come back to this?
Right, well, we got more discussion than that, I'm gonna hear from you.
Everybody's upset, if everybody's upset, and we get to town meeting floor, we'll pull it, you know, we'll just, we'll vote it and we'll pull it if it doesn't work.
But I mean, do we, I, it's okay, but I mean, I wouldn't wanna be in that position for us as a board, you know, because we're gonna wanna come back with something really big and serious at some point. So I, I, I think a lot of what you're saying makes a lot of sense, but we've had experience with this now for a couple of years, and so I'm thinking of all that.
I, and I'm thinking there's a lot of people in town, and there's a lot of people in town, that have a lot of ideas about this, and I just don't want us to get in town, town meeting floor and kinda look like, you know, and then, and then, 'cause pulling it, pulling it, it may be more embarrassing for us, not that we care about the embarrassment, but might not be such good dynamics that we wanna have. So I'm just saying, let's think about that. I don't know how much time we have to think about it though, because apparently we have to do this today, so. Right, right, and look, I mean, you know, we thought it was a prudent next step, right? I mean, so, and, you know, it is a maintenance concern and, you know, having a roof that leaks or a roof that has a catastrophic failure is something you don't wanna go into spring meeting with when you're talking about what you're gonna do with the two buildings. So, you know, and I think when we get a chance to discuss this at the next selectmen's meeting, we can, let's go at it. You know, let's really poke at it and figure out if this is prudent or not.
Okay, I'm gonna fix that one more time. I guess it, it just does bother me if, and I think I can go along with this, but for us to put this in print and then even pull it two weeks from now, I'm just.
I, I don't think that's the.
I think you get the point I'm making.
That's, that's not the, the preferred path. And, you know, unfortunately, uh, we've got a really old building and a, one that needs repairs as well, standing right beside it. And while there may be, um, a, a larger plan over time to take care of them both, the fact is that you, you can't ignore a leaking roof, although we've done a pretty good job of ignoring it for years. And, and from that perspective alone, you know, it, I, I remember thinking about this when I wanted to, uh, add on to my, my house at that point. And the contractor came to me and said, well, before you add on to your house, you, you really need to replace the back half of your roof. I said, what are you, you know, what are you, out of your mind? And he said, no, no, you trust me on this, it's not gonna work out well for you. And I had to swallow hard and recognize that what, he was, he was making sense. In fact, take care of the envelope first and then get into the niceties. And we're at that point, I'm afraid, with that building especially, where we do have to take care of, well, we gotta, we gotta keep the weather out, not in. And, um, and fortunately backed ourselves into a corner that way, not over the last two years, but rather over the last twenty. So, that's where we stand. And I, you know, it's, it's harder to me, for me to explain to any citizen of this town how we can let a, a building, um, that ostensibly we wanna keep and use, how we can let it go to seed and, and, and simply ignore it when we've spent so much time addressing our capital needs overall. So, this is, I hate to say it, is gonna be that, that kind of conversation.
Yeah, and, yeah, go ahead.
Um, you, no, I, I, I agree. I mean, as somebody who replaced the roof because I was concerned with the house, it's three hundred and fifty years old, we did it last fall before the winter hit. Great idea, we spent a lot of money doing it, and it protected the capital investment. I think we're gonna have to do it, but I, I will caution you that there'll be a lot of people at town meetings saying, if you're gonna do the roof, why not do the rest? So, that's, that's where I'm coming from.
And I think.
And I totally understand that you need to, I totally understand that you're gonna need to put some money up, I don't know how much, but certainly enough to probably do an entire roof over there, it's probably gonna be twenty thousand. If it's anywhere the size of my roof, it's twenty to forty thousand, um, I think it's gonna have to get done. You're gonna have to, you, you have to put the money into it to fix the roof.
I, I just wanna make sure we're clear on this, though. This is, the, the money that we're talking about in this article is for specing and bidding.
Design, design.
Specing, which we would have to do no matter, right.
So, it may not be as much, but.
Well, no, the roof's gonna be a lot more.
The roof is gonna be more.
Right, it's in the six figures.
So, I, I, I totally agree, but there's going to be a lot of, yeah, discussion.
So, so let me just, just for people that are watching, there was, there was a, there was a study, Chris asked for a study on what it would cost to repair the, the administrative offices in town hall. They came back with a very comprehensive scope of work and study for both buildings. The number we're taking out for the, this all came out of a discussion around what it would cost just to get the baseline maintenance and repair done on both these buildings. In that discussion, people said, you know, we really should be mo- moving forward with some of this maintenance. There was a line item in there for the roof repair, you know, full disclosure, it's around a hundred and five thousand dollars. Everybody said, you know, we just cannot, you know, we cannot just put that out to bid without drawing, so there was a discussion around having the, the consultant come in and inspect the thing out and then put it out to bid.
Since you mentioned that report, you might let the public know where they can get it. It's online, it's on the Town Hall Study Committee website. A part of the page of the website.
Yeah.
Uh, and so if you just click on that, it's, it's right up top.
Could, can I recommend that we actually even put that on the front page?
Yeah.
And maybe just some of the important documents as we get there and, and, and just to say what, I mean, this was, this kinda came out of that, that, is it EBI? The, the main, the study, you know?
Yeah.
What are the priorities? What are we gonna do now? And is there some small step we can take right now that wouldn't impact the project no matter what it looks like, um, next spring? And, and I, I was a reluctant, uh, party to this, but, um, John made a good case, uh, to me, which I'll, I'll ask him to, if he remembers. He knows exactly what it is, but, um, I, I feel less, like, I don't have a problem administratively pulling this from the warrant, if we get to that point, because if we can't, if we feel like by December tenth, we can't make a cohesive argument why this is important and what's good about it and that we have, um, buy-in from advisory and capital on it, I think we just say that. We just say, listen, we put it on here as a placeholder, we thought we wanted to start some of the drawings. We've come to a, a, a point at which we think we need to do something bigger or different, and we're further along than we were in November, and we're, we're pulling it. I, I have no problem doing that or saying that or, or, um, um, defending that kind of a decision, so. Yeah, go ahead.
Um, one thing is, 'cause it went through my mind when I was, when I first heard this, is that generally in this genre of consideration, what I, you hear is, is that the building needs to be painted. In fact, I've had more, a couple of citizens literally forced me to walk around the building to look at it. So, gen- uh, a lot, there's a number of people, you know, who know about this kinda stuff, or who think that if you're doing anything like this, you, we should be painting this building. So, I'm just saying, that's the kinda dialogue.
So, that was discussed too. The problem is, is, uh, you know, a lot of the windows and trim need to be removed. If you go paint it, there, there's, there's clapboard that needs to be replaced, there's trim that needs to be replaced, there's trim around the windows that needs to be replaced, there's fascia that needs to be replaced, and the folks that were talking about this decided that it was probably a little bit of a stretch to go ahead and do the painting too. And what they wanted to do was prevent the, keep the envelope safe and keep, you know, the big problem is leaking, right?
Once you take off a clapboard, you've got.
And I agree with you. I mean, I, I wanted to go ahead and keep paint too.
I was gonna say, I'm, I think you, in a way, you might, it might be easy to sell this or do this sort of a thing if it included painting and a roof, because that has people, it's sort of like you're just doing the top, but you're leaving the sides to leak.
But the painting involves the, the joining of the two buildings, and then, then you're trapped on one side and it, it could.
No, I know what you're saying. Yeah, I understand.
But, but this is gonna come up.
Yeah, of course, yeah, and I.
I'm concerned about how this is gonna come up.
That's, that's my point. I, I, if we can't articulate this and make a, a good case and do it in a collaborative cohesive manner, then we need to wait.
So, can, can I, uh, and so this is gonna come up also, I'm sure, if you do now in town meeting and at town meeting floor, we're gonna have to be able to explain the reason why we're not gonna do the painting is because it's gonna involve replacing the sillwork, the, the clapboard, the taking windows out because they're structurally loose and you're gonna have to paint around them, and all these things are gonna have to be discussed, so.
But let's do it, I mean, I think it's.
Put on, put on the A game when it comes to how to defend, we're not gonna paint it, we're gonna put a roof.
I assume this includes the capula, the ca- ca- capula?
Cupula.
Cupula, this includes that?
Probably not, I.
'Cause you came to pay the roof, without, 'cause that's, that's blown off on us already.
Right.
Those are the kinds of things that are gonna make them up.
Right, right.
I would like to hear from.
Yeah, so, John and Brian, do you guys, because you were involved in these conversations and the advocacy for something.
Several points there. I guess, to start with, I would say that advisory is not obviously considered this in a formal way, so it's really speaking more from my own point of view. I will say that there was, I think, a fair amount of frustration, desire expressed. Frustration with the idea that we were gonna have another full year go by without doing anything and having some forward progress, particularly on the basic protection of the integrity of the building. To the last point you were making, I was, when we started this discussion a few weeks ago, really thinking the painting as well. Jason and, and others who are aware of the engineering vein were very articulate about painting may be what's visible, but it's the roof that's really most important for protecting the integrity of the structure. And when you get to the painting, you get to not only all the other work that has to be done, but design issues and inter- potential interactions with the work to be done later. So, the thinking on the roof is, this is, okay, one premise is there's a consensus that Old Town Hall should be saved, restored, and used in some productive fashion for the town. That's sort of the premise. If you agree with that, then the roof is necessary and doesn't, what you do on the roof of Old Town Hall is not affected, materially affected by any path you take later on, as long as that path includes a basic restoration of that structure. Besides, that's not the case. You got issues like windows, are you gonna repair or replace? On the clappers, do you scrape it down to bare wood and repaint it, or do you not scrape it to bare wood and paint it? Which the architects say will be a lot shorter useful life. Do you replace the clappers? I mean, those are important decisions that aren't gonna get done for a small roof project, though it's part of the, the larger process. I guess the other thing in terms of selling it, we had talked about, and I don't know if we can actually put it, like, Spring Town Meeting has reports, whether it would be worth having an item like this, but a presentation by the selectmen with support from advisory and capital about the intended process going forward in the intense regards to a full plan for all of town hall on the Spring Town Meeting. I think that's a necessary context for presenting this.
Would you say that your committee would, is generally then receptive to this discussion?
Yes, I'd be, never say never, but I'd be surprised if there weren't.
So, what about capital?
So, I've been part of these discussions as well, um, and I, we've not discussed it as a committee. But capital as a committee acknowledges that something needs to get done with our town hall complex. It's not a question about that. And the work is restarting to, um, to ultimately get to yes. On a larger project, it's also a recognition that in the interim, um, we need to protect the assets. And so, from our perspective, the question of the roof is really pretty simple. Is, is the roof either currently leaking or likely to leak in the immediate future? And the answer to that is, is yes. And secondly, you know, can you repair it, um, without compromising in any way, um, the larger project? Or creating rework, material rework in any way, when you do the larger project? And the answer to that question has come back from, was posed to the architect and has come back as yes. You can do that roof without compromising any of the things that need to get done on, on how, town hall or creating rework. It, it, it really is sort of independent of everything else that needs to, to happen over there. So, from our perspective, it, it's a, it's a worthy and timely investment that's gonna happen sooner or later, no matter what. I, I think, like John, um, I personally, um, would love to see us address the entire envelope. It, it pains me to see, you know, failed paint and wood that's exposed to the elements and potentially rotting as a result of that. The, it, it's, yeah, it, it is definitely rotting. There's no question about it. And so that begs the question, well, should we do the scrape and paint now to protect, you know, same, same questions, right? Same process applies. You know, is, is it failed? Is it, is it suffering? And the second question is, can you do it right now without, you know, creating significant rework? Question one was, you know, yes. Question two was no. The architect came back and said, you know, it's, it's, you start to pull on that thread and you, you end up having to do a lot more than just scrape and paint. I, I, I'm totally given up on that concept, this concept yet. Um, I'm not sure John's totally given up on this concept yet, or the answer that we've received, or maybe we need to quantify the amount of rework that it triggers in order to scrape and paint it now just to protect it. But, you know, the roof was clear. The rest of the envelope, the scrape and paint to protect the envelope, I think is is still an open question, and that's why it's not, not in here. I just, sorry if I, if I may just finish. A, a few of the other examples of the rework, they get triggered, um, if you try to do the, the scrape and paint. The chimney over there, one example, um, doesn't serve a purpose, uh, in, you know, in a fully renovated building. So, there's a question as to whether or not that chimney will ultimately be removed, right? The air conditioning units that are currently mounted through the walls right now, right, will ultimately all go away in the future renovation of that building, uh, and the clappers there will be replaced and, you know, and, 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 and made seamless and it would all be obfuscated by a new coat of paint. So, if you scrape and paint now and then go remove the chimney and those air conditioning units later, you have to patch in the clappers and basically repaint, you, you basically end up repainting it. Hopefully, we can get into, to an answer on the bigger solution, you know, before we would need a new coat of paint over there. Sorry.
Go ahead.
So, I mean, this underscores what I was commenting earlier. We're gonna have to be able to explain this at town meeting floor. Here, we have two major committees, and both of them are of the understanding that maybe you'll scrape and paint, maybe you'll just put a roof, both agree on a roof. I think we have to be able to defend this at town meeting floor, and that, that's my point.
Yeah.
And it's reemphasized by what we see here, um, both among us as well as from the major committees.
I think the, I, I think the, the path, if, if we choose to do this, is that as much as we all would like to see the scrape and paint and, and that kinda work, that visual, to your point, it's, it's pulling on a thread, and I don't think there's any way we're gonna have, be able to have that conversation i- on December tenth for any kind of action. I mean, as, as much as I was, I'm, as I would like, I don't know how that's possible. I think it's a ve- it's a very simple argument to deal with the roof as a, as, as something that's protecting the integrity of the building, and we need to move on that so we can do some work in the spring and then start it, you know? And then the next thing would likely be the exterior envelope and whatever happens interior, and then whatever else is happening next door. Yeah?
There's, um, if there's such concern, or there is concern about, you know, the, um, the walls and stuff not being painted and the leaking and the rotting, is that it all feels will probably look kinda ugly, but at least it puts some kinda sealer up there so that does preserve that till we, you know, so it doesn't.
I have to agree.
No, I mean, some kinda painted over, it's, they probably look ugly, but probably don't wanna do that.
Slack.
We, we, that wa- that was discussed as well.
Gun eye.
And that's where it gets into not just pulling on threads of redo, but questions to the, the design decisions. That, one of the options for the restoration, I, it's actually the recommendations of the architects, I believe, was to do a complete scrape of the whole building, down to the wood. And if you did sort of just a basic, get off loose stuff scraped and put a coat of something on it, you're gonna make that a lot harder. And the reason for doing that is, I guess, technical in terms of the age of the paint, the layers of paint that are on there, and what the longevity of, of the structure and the paint jobs will be if you don't do that compared to what it will be if you do do it. So, it's, you, you could consider, and we talked about putting design money in here as well for doing all of that, so you're basically going out to bid for both roof and the painting. But you get into enough of those design issues that are kinda things that can bollocks up the process, and you're gonna be trying to run a separate process to get a whole strategy, just more conceptual strategy for the big project.
Yeah, if we take this, take this into next year, I mean, just try and do something.
At the same time, but it just didn't seem practical to try to have both of those discussions going on at the same time.
Brian, did you have something?
I mean, to put in perspective, this conversation started ten days ago, so we, we figured out the roof, we've answered the questions that we need to, to, to answer to say, yeah, you can do the roof, and there's a reason to do the roof. We haven't figured out the scrape and paint piece yet, and we're out of time, at least in terms of what goes to print.
And, you know, there are alternatives to scraping and painting. They're, they have historically correct composite clapboard for buildings, and we may find that we want those kind of alternatives.
That, that's the kind of compli- complicated, involve, process-wise involve question that you get into when you do the walls. You don't get into that with the roof.
Yep.
Doing that with the walls and deciding where we're going with the larger structure at the same time would be.
So, uh, with, at the, um, I'd like to, if any of the selectmen have anything else to say, I'll let you say. So, with, at the, I'd like to, if any of the staff and have anything else to say, I'll let you say, I'd like to move on, and then we're, when we decide what's going on the warrant, we can give one final nod to this particular topic.
So, again, these are only a design and bidding, replacement options for the Town Hall roof on the old side. But certainly, if you mention, if they're gonna take out simple things like a chimney wall, that's gonna be a hole in the roof after you're done. So if you're gonna replace it, you gotta fix the roof and repair it with a design. I want that involvement there as well from those design plans. I wanna know if their design, a roof that would eliminate air conditioning ducts and, and potential things like chimneys, which are, that's a structural thing that goes right through and is gonna punch to the roof. So I wanna have those involved in those design plans.
So I just wanna remind the selectmen that all we're asking the Town Meeting to vote on is twenty thousand dollars to do the design drawings. After that's done, the funds have to be appropriated, so there's a second bite of the apple, right? This is, you know, a control process, and I don't think we're gonna run into, I think everybody's gonna get a chance to hit the weasel with a bat, right?
That's a good one.
I guess, I know you wanna go on, but we didn't, we need to discuss this thoroughly. I won't, I don't know why, but I just keep thinking that. So if we do do this, and we spend the twenty thousand dollars, and we have a roof design, but then between now and the spring, we really do do the big, the big project. We do really get together as a community. We came up with a master design.
Right.
Well, that'll then have covered that, and we'll arrive at Town Meeting and definitely hands are gonna go up and say, well, it's nice that, but you wasted twenty thousand dollars.
Well, the twenty would go into the drawings.
Twenty's gonna happen no matter what, and that was the discussion.
And that gets the roof done in May or June of next year instead of waiting for some two, three months later.
And again, we're not recommending this. We, we, we do need to have a good conversation. I think the general consensus is, we'd like to do something that is not gonna impact the full project, and this is something small that we're gonna do anyway. It's not gonna impact anything that comes next, and it's, it is the only thing that we can probably do to, to protect the integrity of the building and not impact some other piece. So let's move on to recommendations on the next two articles, and then we'll just circle back quick.
A group of us went up into the attic and actually looked at the structure of the building. Basically, that building is a post and beam barn. It's fascinating for people who are in fascinated by it as well. So, you know, structurally-
Yeah, it's fascinating. I've seen it. It's pegs, it's wooden pegs, and there's-
The beams, the beams are a foot and a half by a foot and a half. It's amazing. So, you know, when people see the clapboard all rotted out, it's not affecting the structural integrity of the building, but it is causing water damage.
And a whole bunch of other things.
And the roof will help with that.
And the roof is gonna help with that.
Article seven, acquisition of real property. Chris, you wanna walk us through this?
So this is a culmination of a, of a process that's been going on for probably a year. There's a piece of land up at, on Putechus Fishing Highway, five twenty, is that the address?
Five eighty five.
Five eighty five, I'm sorry. It's the, it's the, it's the little nursery, right?
Espizodos, yep.
At the corner of, just beyond Pond and, and three A. And it's been in agricultural exemption for a number of years, the whole, two plus a total, a little bit more than seven and a half acres. That runs all the way back to King Street. There's some wetland, there's a, there's a stream that runs through the back, which is Pepperton Brook, which goes into Lily Pond, the town's water supply. And then a right first refusal. That said, the, and the owners decided they wanna get out of business and sell and, you know, move on with their lives. So after lots of back and forth, a, a, a number's been reached for three hundred fifty thousand dollars to acquire seven, seven point six four acres. The town's effect, it's not effective, we're not exercising a right first refusal, but we, we're effectively doing that for all intents and purposes. And the, the land has the potential to be used in at least three different ways. Once it's more formally assessed and walked again. It can be potentially public works, it has some potential public safety use, and, and, and just as importantly, it has open space and environmental protection purposes.
And watershed.
And watershed. Because it, it, you know, the permanent park does flow right through the back end of it. There's, there's marsh, there's preserved land by the Conservation Trust on each side of this parcel. On the front, there's some homes in the back. There is upland in the back, it's not all wet, and the parts that are wet are not, you know, everything. And they're not swamp wet, they're, you know, just damp more. There is a small pond in the front that was man-made that's really used for irrigation purposes, was for the garden center. So it's, it's, it's definitely, you know, it, it's, it's, it's been presented to the advisor committee and Capitol Budget Committee. They're both, advisor recommended approval by a vote of six to nothing, and Capitol recommended approval by a vote of three to nothing, so it's been reviewed. Now, there's more due diligence that has to be done in terms of what the next steps are for the land. That said, this is a time to, just to make that acquisition, to move forward. And again, if it ends up being, if, if, and if, if an assessment at, at the end of the day says the best use is open space, well, then we can turn to the, uh, the CPC or the land trust or whoever and say, hey, can we look at something to preserve for some or all of it? So.
So this just authorizes us to make the deal, it doesn't appropriate them?
Town meeting gives the selectmen the, the authorization to acquire. It doesn't mandate the acquisition, because, you know, you still have to go through it. If it turn, there's no reason to expect us anything bad on that side from everything we know. I mean, it's not, it's not, it's not virgin woods or virgin swamp, right? It's been made, been used by man for a very long time. That said, you know, we, we gotta do some due diligence, make sure there's nothing dumped there, and, you know, check the title, make sure there's not some crazy title. And if there's any issues, it's like we can always stop it and not approve, and not vote for it.
And do we have to find a funding source?
Well, this, this, this authorizes any funding source. Uh, I think there was a conversation by the board at the last meeting about, well, why don't we just use free cash? There is free cash available. Um, and you could do that. And it's just, and it's bought, it's done. And I believe, I mean, I'm not gonna speak for Capitol Budget or advisory, but I think it was a, it definitely got some strong, pretty strong vibes out of, of a Capitol Budget that they'd, they'd say, just, just pay for it. Just, just spend the cash and get it bought if you have it. There's no reason to, to not to at this point, so.
Okay, and then just in the informational summary, just a question, and this is, goes back to kind of optics. You know, is it best to just say something like, for public facilities or the preservation of-
I can make it, say whatever you like.
Open space. I, I mean, just to kind of generic, I mean, the minute you socialize a specific purpose, it kinda-
Yeah, make it vague.
You know, I don't wanna be vague, but we have no idea what we're gonna do with it.
There's several options in it.
Right. Oh, sorry? For the, for the public benefit. Yeah, I think that might, something like that, because, you know, if you say it's public works, there, you know, you're like, wait a minute.
And there is, no, I mean, just to be clear, there's no proposals to put anything on this land at all. This is only-
Acquisition.
The, the land's for sale.
We have an opportunity, yeah.
We have an option to buy it, and, and it's, and you're, there's seven point six four acres of land into asset anywhere that's not available, much less on three A.
It's rare to have a, a piece of property show up available for the town and on three A, and this size of a property, we will find this again in a while.
And there has Pepperton Brook running through it, and, you know.
Well, lots of reason why we should acquire it.
So you want me to be more generic and just say for the public, for public benefit, or I can say, public facilities and our open space?
I think, look, you, you spend the money on, on a piece of property, I think that's wonderful. If it, it's, if it's going to do something material for the town, that's even better. But ultimately, I'd like to be able to tell the voters that we actually have some use in mind. It's not, it's not going into a file door to be pulled out at some point in the future.
But this is like Article six B. We don't have that.
No, we have, we, we may have an intent.
Well, oh, can I just?
That's, that's, look, I, I think this piece of property is very attractive for the simple reason that there's, there's little available along three A. And ju, if, 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 if you're gonna use it for public safety, you're gonna use it potentially for public works, that access alone is incredibly useful. But I do believe we owe it to the, the, the voters, or more importantly, the residents of town in general, to give them an idea that we've actually got a series of thoughts that we wanna use to fit it, but the land's not gonna hang around. So we either act now and, and get it, and then come back to you with plans, or we accept that it probably disappears before we can come back to you with plans ready to act upon it.
And, so I had a long talk with the people that were, acquired a lot of land to protect the watershed back ten years ago. And this was a piece of land they tried to acquire and couldn't, because it does have an impact on the watershed. So at the very least, we do nothing, put this away as conservation land.
Right.
Protect the watershed. It's also a transitional area for animals heading down to the bigger pieces.
All, all of that's-
I mean, that's, that's doing nothing.
All of that's fine, but that's the point. There's a definition that there is a use.
There is.
Okay?
Right, I just, I, my only goal is to, to not be too specific, 'cause we really haven't had that discussion about what all the options are and, you know, for it, other than, you know, there's myriad possibilities, you know, so at what point do you drop in all the myriad possibilities?
Yeah, I think that it's important, this is what really sells me on this and why I think it's a good idea is actually not so much what we're gonna do for it now, because we can't even have that discussion now or even in the near future. But that, when you, but, you know, we're a three hundred year old enterprise, and this is, this is something, when you can acquire land, is, can be of use, immense of use in the future, just in narrowly, the fact that we have this land. So I, I think as time goes on, uses will definitely be found with this, there's different ways to figure out, you know, Boston was only, you know, mostly in the ocean two hundred years ago, and you, there's ways to fill in these things and use it. So I'm just saying from a long-term perspective, we're not gonna go wrong as a community. In fact, it's our responsibility to get this for the community, eh? It's a little bit like, you know, was it sewers folly or whatever it is, I mean, it, it wasn't be able to explain exactly what it was, you got laughed at, but it ended up being half the United States. The land, they don't make any more of it.
Sure it does.
Uniquely valuable as, as Paul said, so, yeah. So I just think because of the long-range benefit is something we really should do. Also, too, the price was at one time, you know, we, we did a good job of making sure this is a very good price for this property, so.
I'd like to make a motion. We recommend Article seven, acquisition of real estate property, kind of mentioned.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
But zero, if, if the question's big, then we can take it offline, but just, you know, how to-
How's, how's, how's open space, watershed protection and public uses?
Yes.
Yeah, I think it's something you could say it's beneficial as well possibly, for the long-term benefit of the community. It's a long-term benefit of the community to pick up six and a half acres at a good price.
We'll let Steve speak to it, too, 'cause you can-
If anyone has any language that you want to send it to.
Cause people, I mean, there are people that are gonna be like, you know. I'm not giving you three hundred fifty thousand dollars, I'm just gonna sit there. But then there's other people that are gonna say-
I don't, I don't, I think, we just did it.
Right.
We just repeat the argument. It's non-structural.
Okay.
The last article is the Community Preservation Committee. There's, there's, there's three items. There's two renewals of funds that we, we had historically for three years. These only had two year uses. They expired unfortunately at the end of June. There are still active projects on both of these, Milton Field, you know, getting those, that, that upgraded bathroom facility built. And Hundred, Sawyer Street, that's that basketball court, and some other luck in the back by the library. The other, the third, the, the new one, so those are just renewals of funds that were already allocated, so it's not new money. It just gives them two more years, and hopefully they'll not take anyone near that long. Tredus House, that is the replacement of the building. A, after some more numbers came back from the state, the committee, and I'm gonna summarize, but Russ is here to talk to it if you have any questions. The, 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 the Housing Authority became concerned that there may be a gap developing, and, and didn't want this to, this has been going on for many years, and they're really, they're really there. So they came forward and said, hey, we just need a, 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 a couple of hundred extra thousand dollars just in case to make sure it's available, to make sure the bids come back okay, and everything comes back okay.
Would you explain to everybody what the Tredus House is?
The Tredus House is, is a four unit-
And where it's located.
All right, the Tredus is next to the fire station, the police station. The land was subdivided, there's this open space, a little bit of open space behind it, so the front piece, which is the old house, has been sold. And that fund, those funds are gonna go back into building the new piece in the back, which will be a modern, it's for, it's for physically disabled adults. And it has, so it's, there's units for four developmentally disabled and physically disabled. And there, there's room, there'll be four modern units, including one that has the ability, I think, just to drive it, if I remember it, with Taffey, not they, they said to drive an ambulance up to, so they could load someone in and out if you needed to. There's, this place for, for staff, not live-in staff, but on in-service staff, around the clock at the facility to, to assist with presence. And it's, and it's built unfortunately to prevailing wage and other state regulations, so it's, it's not cheap. So.
So I-
But, and also, it's a state project. It's not a town project. It's a, it's a state project. That, that said, the state is parsimonious with support and help. This is a creative approach that's allowed the, the, the value of the property to be used to help rebuild a new facility. So I, I believe that even since this request, the numbers come down, I think they're, they're feeling a little bit better that they may not need this much money, or maybe not any of it.
Right.
But it's one of these, let's just be safe, have that money in the kitty in case it's needed.
And CPC has the funds. I think it's important, again, in the, in the language of this, to put in that, who the payer is. You know, who we're, who we're giving this money to, 'cause it's not a town project. So whether it's Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you know, via the Cohasset Housing Trust, replacement of the Tredus House, sixty-three Elm Street, or whatever it is.
Yeah, I can add a little bit more about it.
I, I just think because it's not Milliken Field or Sawyer Street or the, the school things, it's, it is a separate entity from the municipality of the town of Cohasset, so it has, you know what I mean? I think that's important to make that clarification.
In fact, this was, the, the money was originally allocated several years ago. I can go back and look for that description, see if it's, see what it looks like, but I can get more from, from that.
For Tredus, yeah.
And for, you know, for the benefit of the town, so it's not, you know, it's, it's, you know.
It was last year for a hundred thousand.
It's different than a private, but it is.
It's just public.
It's separate from the town, and I think that clarification needs to be made.
I, I, you know, I, I will make sure I add something to that. So, advisor committees, review that they're recommended approval by a vote of five to nothing. That's only because somebody wasn't in the group, that's the only reason it was six to nothing. Community preservation is recommended approval by a vote of six to nothing. Capitol Budget, I have, I have listed here if there were no recommendation at this time, is that fair?
At this time, yes.
So at what time are we gonna get a recommendation from Capitol Budget?
And you would be recommending the, the, the top two, the town assets?
I'm sorry?
You, you'd be recommending the top two asset or all of them? You'd be opining on all three?
They're all capital.
Okay.
Well, the, the, one of the questions, while Brian can explain it for, for the committee.
It's all CPC money.
Doesn't matter, yeah.
We, we agree to select them, and we're gonna go ahead and take a look.
Yeah, I, I think we'd be prepared to vote on this as we hear the members.
So, yeah, who are we talking about, the top two, not the bottom one, all right?
No, no.
Oh.
Um.
Why would we not hear the bottom one?
That, that is, I mean, so let me just, I'm just, cause I'm arguing with you, I'm not taking a position. It's not owned by the town. It's not on the town's balance sheet. It is a state project.
But it's the town's money.
No, 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 I, I fully understand that. That, that said, it is not technically, it's not, well, not technically, it's not a town, it's not owned by the town, it's not a town project. And, and the, CPC is funded-
The fund, the bylaw says, any appropriation greater than eighteen thousand dollars and a life greater than eighteen months or twelve months is a capital item, and it gets reviewed by the-
Of, of, of town assets. Can we, let's table this.
Yeah, no, 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 I, I-
Let's not have it. Not tonight.
No, no, no.
But I wanna have this conversation.
When?
Next week. Wanna put it on next week's agenda? I mean, I'm serious, 'cause you, you haven't heard it, this is fine. You, you, we're not gonna change the warrant. The warrant's on the agenda for tonight. Right? So let's just, let's talk about it next week.
Just for point of clarification, though. I, 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 I respect and understand that the, the town will not end up owning Tredus House as a structure. The town owns two hundred thousand dollars, okay? The town contributed that two hundred thousand dollars. That's the capital asset. So from that perspective, it, it-
Capital asset, yeah.
The cash is the capital asset. And all we're saying, all we're asking for is a, a review to say, is that, you know, is it an appropriate use of the cash? I, it's a matter of policy, not, not the project. Stay with the process, because if we don't, there's going to come an awful time in the future. That's all.
Yeah, I mean, but some of the two hundred thousand is matching money from the state's two thousand.
Fair enough, but it's, it, we only get that, those matching funds if we-
No, you're saying it's all town money. Some of it is state money.
No, it's not state money after they give it to us. Right? After they match, it's no longer the state's, it comes back to us.
But some of the money is not from taxpayers, it's from state reimbursement.
And where did the state get that money?
So why?
Cause it came from the taxpayers.
So what this is saying, what this is asking the town to do is to approve an expenditure of two hundred thousand dollars. It doesn't say net of any kind of state contribution, so let's be clear about this.
It's town money.
It's, it's, it's implying that it's town money. You know, and I just, we've been doing this so long, I just, I get frustrated, I'm sorry. I've been doing this for fifteen years, and, you know, folks just won't play by the process, and when we don't, we get ourselves in trouble.
So why don't we do this at Town Meeting floor then? It has to go to, it has to go to-
No, 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 I'm okay with that.
But it has to, it has to go to the printer.
I'm, I'm, I'm being a little bit manic, 'cause I wanna get my- I'm, I'm, I'm being a little bit analytic, cause I wanna give a point across this.
This has to go to the printer, so, then you can put in board select and we'll vote on it, recommendations at town meeting floor.
Or, or we, I mean, it depends, I mean, or, or we vote on it now.
I think the, the only, the question at hand.
I wanna hear from capital.
Yeah.
I wanna hear from capital.
I'd rather vote on it now than get the printer.
Yeah, well, I'd rather, I'm loath to go to the printer if we can avoid it, I don't know why this hasn't, we're not hearing from capital on it, but irrespective, we have to talk, I, I think, Jack, we're on process, but we have to protect our own process too. And I've sat in here enough years when, if we haven't gotten, we haven't gotten the information we need at the time, we gotta make a decision, well, I, I tend to be inclined that we need to make our decisions, we owe that to the community, so I, 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 I'm loath to send a, a warrant article out without our decision on it, especially since, I myself personally, these look, these look fine to me and I know they've been scrubbed by two committees, so, I mean, I could vote on it.
And this project was scrubbed last spring by us when we, when we recommended a hundred.
I mean, we've discussed this in.
So I would like to recommend that we take a vote, if you two are uncomfortable, and I'm not putting it on you two, but if, if anybody's uncomfortable, you can abstain and we can certainly change our recommendation on town meeting floor and after capital budget's heard it.
So why would we, just not for good process? I mean, this isn't controversial, this is more about process, it's not about the items, it's about the process. Why would we not just say board of selectmen will vote on it on the floor?
Well, because our process is to be res, the integrity of, when we have pushed things to the final end and we've pushed this meeting and, and we need to make our decision, I don't know. We need to make our decisions because we're the board of selectmen and if a committee, I don't know what the issue is or why it's not been heard, but if it hasn't been at this point here, I don't think that we should not be making our decisions, that is weak leadership, in my view.
Can we just remember though, we can't speak out of both sides of our mouth, because one of the first things that came up in the goals and objectives was to increase the communication between ourselves and advisory committees, and the one thing that's missing on here is an advisory committee's opinion.
No, it's on there.
No, we have it, we have a recommendation at this time.
An advisory, meaning the capital budget.
No, advisor's on there.
Advisory committee.
And lowercase a advisory, that's what it's talking about.
Chris, can I, can I ask why capital budget wasn't asked, you know, why was this not put on capital budgets agenda?
No, I, there, there's, there's a, there's a, um, there's a, there's a jurisdictional question between two committees.
The selectmen have, have, has a policy item, have said CPC gets reviewed if it's a capital item.
There, there, there are, there's a, there's an open question between two committees that, that that's an issue that I, I don't wanna.
Is it legal or policy?
No, so this is a policy question.
Okay, but we've, we've agreed to that, we can go back to the meetings where the selectmen have agreed that that's gonna be.
I'm just explaining to you, Jack, what the situation is, I, 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 and because it's kind of hit very quickly over the, the, the Tredus House item, the, the first two are just literally procedural, so I don't know that capital would have voted, would have looked at them anyway, they're just renewals of things that have already been approved.
Fifteen years of doing this, fifteen, and every year we have to fight the same.
The Tredus House, it literally came up, this is a, this came up at the last minute because, because there was deep concern, so there, there hasn't been a lot of time, so this is really a timing thing, more than anything. Um, I think this could get worked through without too much of a problem between now and town meeting, I don't think it's gonna, this, let me rephrase that. I'm gonna do everything I can to make sure this gets worked through, so that everything will, will be smooth, but we just didn't have enough time until before.
Okay, so I, I guess I'm asking the selectmen to, you know, bear with me and, and let's vote on this on, on town meeting floor. We'll, we'll, we'll go to the meeting and vote on it, once we have full information, we have a recommendation from capital budget. Let me just take a second and describe what happens when you don't do stuff like that. James Brook, the, 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 the dam that doesn't work, that was one of those things that didn't get the proper vetting by capital budget committee. We, that project came in double what it was supposed to cost, the motors never worked, they broke down five times. You know, we do these projects, we don't vet them correctly, people that are sponsoring the projects get bent out of shape when other folks come in and start asking tough questions, but that's the process and that's how we get good decisions, just like Kevin raised the question about the roof on town hall today, and I think we all said, you're right, we need to do the process and we need to talk about that. I mean, this is a significant amount of money, it's, it's, it's over, it's almost four hundred thousand dollars and capital budget hasn't looked at it. And that's what we have capital budget committee.
But they, they looked at the first two already.
Did you guys look at the first two already?
They did it last year.
I, I don't have that in mind.
That's all right, the, the Milliken Field shed from last year and the.
Last year.
Two, two years ago.
It was two years, sixteen.
Two years ago.
So the one that's not been done is Tredus.
We did look at it two years ago.
Yeah, John.
Yeah, I just to clarify what Jack said, it, the money involved from a, if you're gonna take it from a capital perspective, recognizing that it's an asset of, I think technically the state or the housing authority, but it's certainly state process, it's state reviewed, the state is doing the budgets and the plans and everything, as we understood it from Taffey. Um, but that project as a whole is somewhere between a million one and a million three. The three hundred thousand, hundred thousand previously plus two potentially, is the CPC's contribution to that full budget. But the other funding is coming from a state contribution, I don't remember the exact numbers, but there, I think for us, isn't it several hundred thousand of the states looking in? There's five hundred and fifty or so from the Tredus House sale.
It's gonna be back to.
There's one other small source and there's this source. Just as a matter of facts, um, it is a significant capital item, but it's not a capital asset of the town of Cohasset. And therefore, I don't think technically by bylaw under the purview of capital budget.
Uh, so.
Doesn't mean the capital budget.
The bylaw says if you appropriate funds and you, you, you put the funds against something that has a life greater than eighteen months and a, and, and it's greater than twelve thousand dollars, so, you know, that's not the exact wording, it's a capital item.
So for, and this is, this is where, this is a discussion that I wanna have, but it's, it's not an agenda item to, to, to go through this and I would really wanna invite more people, capital budget, more advisory committee members, to have this full conversation, because I, you know, the way I read the bylaw, it is, and I'm not saying there shouldn't be a, a pining or recommendation, but maybe it's at a different level.
Why would we not want, why would we?
Because here's the, here's why, okay, I'm not, I, I, maybe it's, maybe the discussion of the funds are opined on by, by capital budget, but they can't bring their same deep dive, is this a good use of the funds, kicking the tires that they do for, for town assets to a project that's completely out of our control in terms of design and execution. James Brook was a town project, that was the town by a, you know, a department within the town, I mean, that's the kind of stuff, town hall, that is the kind of stuff that they should be looking at and saying, should we, shouldn't we? I see a little different if the asset is actually outside of the town, because you can't kick the tires. But again, this is the conversation that I'm not prepared and I don't, I don't think we as a, as a board should be going down on capital budgets.
Cunningham Bridge wasn't really a project of the town.
Correct.
And, you know.
But they didn't.
Yes, it was.
You know, the due diligence that the capital budget committee put into the bridge, and it caused a lot of problems and they got a lot of feedback, negative feedback on it, what's really appropriate, and when you look at what that bridge looks like today with those railings, we really got a nice product, it, it turned out really well and it was difficult and people were uncomfortable with the pushback, but in the end, it worked. And we should not be uncomfortable with pushing back on big numbers like this, you know, I just, you know, what is this? This is, then this is a loophole in the way that we spend money.
And, and that is exactly the conversation that I think we have to have, I mean, Cunningham Bridge, we.
It's a town asset.
That.
We own that bridge.
Right.
We own that bridge.
We own the bridge and not only that, the capital budget was ultimately, committee itself was only involved really ultimately in the actual article that went before for extra money, it was individuals who, who led the charge and.
You're getting, you're getting soaked in the weeds.
I know, we're way off agenda and I'm really nervous about that.
Sorry, what, what, can I just ask, well, I'm just gonna write recommendation at town meeting on this, unless the board wants to vote. I mean, and then, uh, you have time.
I, I, I.
Give me some direction.
I mean, if you look at the capital budget committee, the, the bylaw, it says, you know, the town asset base of capital liability, capital structure, so, you know.
So, so I'm gonna.
It's not, so.
With all due respect.
How, how does the Tredus House get booked?
You know what?
How does it get booked on the finisher statement?
It's not the finisher, it's not, it's not owned by the town, it's owned by the state.
Anything to do with it, so here's the story, there's, there's two issues. One is really looking at that capital budget bylaw, figuring out what we wanna do and trying to accommodate everything that Jack is, is advocating for, i- i- do we do it the same way? But let's get really clear on that, okay, so we don't run into this problem where committees are having some discourse over whether they, but, so that's another, that's another night, okay? Right now, we have a warrant that has to go to the printer tomorrow and we have a long night ahead of us tomorrow when we do our goals and objectives. So for the, for the sake of tonight, I would like to recommend, I'm prepared to vote on this too, but I think just to honor the selectmen who aren't comfortable with it, we add that recommendation we made at town meeting, I'd like to propose that, somebody else on the agenda?
I appreciate the accommodation, otherwise I'm just gonna vote against it and it's gonna go out three to two. And then, you know, we'll have to explain ourselves.
Well, excuse me, but you have two votes on the board.
I read mine, I, 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 I read mine.
Well, thinking Mr. Garm, it could be a mistake.
It's the former chairman of the capital budget committee.
I guess it's he'll.
Oh, I don't know, I, I don't know, let's put up for a vote.
Motion on this or?
So I would, I would like to recommend that we add to the warrant that there's, uh, the selectmen will make a recommendation at town meeting, um.
Do you wanna vote on the first two?
Kind of motion?
No, because I think that argument stands, my understanding is it's the same order, and, and those in fact are, is money, again, it's been already appropriated.
Right.
But those are town assets, so one would make the ar, you know, one could make the argument that that Milliken Field shed.
But that's already been reviewed.
I understand, I know, I don't know.
It's not gonna hold anything back.
To me, it seems a moot, moot point that there, those two either are or not reviewed.
Does anybody wanna make a motion, cause otherwise I wanna move forward.
Wanna split them?
Go ahead, make the, make the motion, I'll second it.
I'm not gonna make a motion.
What's the motion?
There is no motion, I'm asking if anybody has an emotion.
Out of comedy, I'll, I'll go along, out of comedy, to my fellow selectmen who feel this strongly about it.
I, ITY is supposed to EDY.
Yeah, right, so, I do have something to say on this though, uh, could I say something quick?
Sorry.
In the description, we should have what, uh, Mr. Chapman was saying about this being two hundred thousand, but we're getting a million dollar type thing out of it. Or, or the building itself is a million dollar value, you know, I think that's a valuable.
A, a bigger description on the Tredus.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's because, but the two hundred thousand dollars is, is for a project where the state or whatever is putting in one point two million for a total project of, you know, that makes it, uh, it's a more honest, uh, yeah, anyways, I like that in the description.
More explanatory when it comes to the town meeting floor.
So now what we need to do is, um, unless somebody's uncomfortable with six B, which is the article on the roof repairs, um, is to vote articles one through eight onto the warrant. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, okay, so we have a warrant, we have our recommendations.
What I'm gonna ask is that, um.
We sign the sheet?
You just pick one sheet, clean one. Well, many of us have drafted, oh, I have to print it out, before we leave, I'll, 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 I'll.
I don't say drafts, compounding them.
Okay.
Drafts should be determined at town meeting.
Okay, so I, I'm sorry to try to keep us moving, but we're an hour behind and I started off so well. Um, but we do have a meeting tomorrow night, which is our goals and objectives, so I wanna plow through the rest of the agenda. So town meet, town manager update?
I have, uh, nothing at the moment.
Okay.
There's a lot of things, but I won't, I won't take any more time.
Okay, selectmen update, Kevin, anything?
I'll make it quick, but Chris and I and the fire chief and, uh, head of emergency planning and a very smart citizen, Steve Hepjirati, met on the, um, power issue that we were addressing, had a very good meeting just to keep you informed of it and went through, got a map out, we looked at the vulnerabilities in our power grid and so forth, uh, to cut a long story short, uh, Chris is gonna, is drafting up three points, we can, three questions, we wanna ask National Grid, I don't know whether you've sent that or not, but he's, he's gonna send the letter to them for us to have a meeting and so they'll know that there are these three issues, you know, things like, you know, the, the tree trimming and when they can do it, other concrete, three concrete tangible things, so that worked out good, that's progress we made. We asked also, and get the help of our state representative, to give us a reliability report, it's called, where the state or some organization in the state generates a, you know, power and electrical reliability report for each town so that it can tell us how many outages we've had, when we've had them and so on, so we made the formal request for that and we got it. So that's within our possession, if you wanna have a copy of the sent to you.
Can we put it up on the, is it something appropriate to put up on the website?
I don't know, why don't we look at it, yeah, I don't, it's public, it's public information, so that's a, so that's an instrument we're gonna use as we go forward, so making progress on that project, okay?
Great.
Get that, Chris?
Fabulous.
I'm good.
Well, um, Jack, I'll go last.
Uh, uh, just quickly, um, we were invited to, all of us, the selectmen and the town manager were invited to go to Rockport and meet with the folks that did the Rockport renovation of their town hall and talk about how they programmed it with musical, music events and plays and all sorts of other things, so there's an open invitation, I think Tracy's gonna try to book to see what everybody's schedule looks like for after Thanksgiving to do a field trip.
Okay, if we do that, we need to post that and Diane will have to put it up as an agenda.
Tracy will take care of that, yeah.
Well, Diane needs to do that.
Trevor, we'll be in touch.
Um, it was mentioned earlier, and for the first time, I actually get to drive across, uh, Cunningham Bridge. I, I, I was, I was very, um, taken aback by how attractive the, the, um, superstructure is, um, the views approaching and, and on the bridge are, are really attractive and I frankly think that the state went above and beyond, the DOT went above and beyond the execution, I think the probably, the contractor may have as well. Um, and I bring it forward because while there was plenty of discussion about whether or not it was advisable to push for it, I think all of us would agree that the result is a positive one. And I, I, I simply ask the board to consider, uh, sending a letter under our names back to DOT, thanking them for their partnership and for the result, because I do believe that what we got was a, um, was even a far stretch better than what any of us anticipated it might have been. Um, and it's, and it's really an attractive completed project, so I, I, that, my, my request is to the board, give some consideration. It's, I, I will bet you dollars to donuts, it's almost unheard of, that a constituent town writes back to the, to the supplying agency and says, hey, by the way, thanks a lot.
All right.
So.
Quick question on that, is it, is it complete?
No.
Um, is there gonna be more pavement put down? Because it, it seems like it's.
Yeah, because the pavement.
Awkwardly.
Yeah, the, the, the top, the top coat will go on in the spring, because it does extend over land and it needs to settle over the winter before they. So there is a top coat and they're still doing the weapons restoration, but otherwise, the facial, uh, the, the facings all done and I got a nice picture, actually. They'll go to take some shots with this drone, during some of the construction, but it really does look, it looks, the bridge looks light years ago. It was a green generic bridge that you could have gone over any high, any overpass, it looks, it looks like it belongs there. It blends in really nicely, the stone is, they reclaim go out of the stone, um, and it really does look good, uh, but the paving, the, the final table will come in the spring, um, so.
So I, I just, again, I, I, I think it would go an incredibly long way to communicate and pleasure the DOT.
Yeah, I agree.
I don't think a motion is entirely done. What's completely done?
Um, and that's, that's up to all of you, it's not gonna be completely done for another six months and I, I, they, so.
Can you maybe draft something and then we'll?
Once you draft and think, yeah, so when you.
I, I.
I think the whole intention, yeah, I think it's.
Why don't I draft somebody else, circulate all of you.
All right, and put a June date on it.
Yeah.
I, I think you should, you should, you could send that letter out now, so, you know, we're looking forward to the completion of the spring. The property number really went out.
A little point of view, we're not.
Right, but it, it really should just be a, a, an amicus letter, you know, we're not, we're not.
You don't wanna write something so that, you don't wanna write something so.
Subject to the completion, you know, the.
Yeah, but you don't wanna write something so that if something fell into the water or it got wrong, that we, we now have.
Just tell me that we like your looks.
I know, I'm thinking a little, a little on this, because your, your intention is very nice.
All right, I just have one thing, I wanna, um.
So, could, could we ask them to make a drawbridge? Could we, if you wanna change order?
Actually, we oughta have.
I want trolls that live underneath.
Okay.
Um, I forward everybody a, um, an email I got from a resident just about some of the Logan, um, airport noise and there are a couple of new flight patterns that, um, shine, you know, I, as I say, oh, I can see the guy in three B again. Um, but one of the things, this.
His name was Horace, by the way, he was reading Warren Peace.
Right, exactly, you can see what he's reading, um, but one of the things this resident suggested, which I think is a good idea, is to look at Hull's website. They actually have a citizen like button on, on their homepage, which we may not need, but just someplace on our website where people can, you know, click in and get right to the Massport, the Massport complaint, um, uh, line. Just said it, would be something to look into, so, were we okay?
Yeah.
All right.
So.
All right, did you get that?
Yes.
Okay.
So what we're gonna do, we're just gonna tell people.
Is that what we're gonna do, we're just gonna tell people to call the, the white list?
Well, I mean, that, really, there's not a whole lot the town can do, I mean, Ralph is our, is our expert and he, and I, I suggested to this resident that he be in touch with our state reps, cause they have more clout. Um, you know, they're, they're, that's what Massport is, it's an entity, there's not a whole lot we can do, other than, you know, hear from Ralph and see if there's some advocacy efforts we can participate in, but this, this guy was just saying in Hull, they actually have a place right on their website where if, if there's a problem, it directs you right to the Massport website. And I said that was something I would bring up and have us look into it, um, it's not a necessarily a request or a demand, it's just something, you know, is that something easy to do, I don't know. But a lot of people don't know where to bring their complaints to, thus the letter I got.
It's worse than it is if it's an authority.
Yeah, there you go, um, okay, um, so we have two sets of minutes from October ninth and ten twenty-three, anybody wanna have a motion to approve?
Diane.
Do you have a motion to approve?
Nope, not denied, she didn't send the ninth.
Not denied? And send the ninth?
No, Jen didn't finish it.
Oh, okay, not yet, ten, take.
Right, I'm not, yeah, two minutes of ten twenty-two, so, eighteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, uh, no topics that reasonably anticipated, um.
Oh, yeah, I make a motion and return to two thousand eighteen, we didn't do that.
Oh, Jesus. Do we have to go back?
I'm really freaking out over here, you know, I don't wanna, I wanna go, I'm turning the TV on, turning the TV on and seeing if there was a big election last night, you know.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.